And we are now recording.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 16th, 2020 work session for the Math Acton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this school board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or at courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5:00 PM today by visiting our website. By way of announcements, an executive session of the board was held virtually prior to the work session meeting this evening, June 16th, 2020, for the purpose of reviewing and discussing contract negotiation status between the board and the Math Acton Education Association. By way of attendance, we have all board members present. Actually, I totally forgot, we need to do this by roll call. Let me get my list. Ms. Reese?
Here.
Hall? Ms. Hall?
Oh, I'm here. Sorry, I'm here.
Neverett?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Purdue?
Here.
Can Crow?
Here. You forgot me, but I'm here.
I didn't forget you. I'm not going in any particular order. Six, seven, and Drummond?
Here.
All right, that takes care of attendance. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there are two presentations. The first one is a status update by Mr. Bricker, our Director of Business Services, on the 2020-2021 final budget. Mr. Bricker, I believe we have a slide you want to post to the screen, so I'll stop sharing and you can take to the screen.
Hey, Dr. Zerbi. So tonight, I'm going to be providing you an update with regards to the budget and where we currently stand. This is the same document that was presented at the Finance Committee earlier this month. So right now, the revenues were increased by $200,441.57 from the prior budget that was presented in May. That has a local tax reduction of $198,000 state revenue from the subsidies increased by $399,721, and the title money actually decreased by $1,273. The changes that came from the expenses were the retirement of staff and changes in reduction in the supplemental contracts. Also, that resulted in a change in benefits and a reduction there. There was no change in the department budgets so far this last month, sorry. And that the other changes were we had $325,851 in the business office. And this is for PPE, technology, transportation, sanitizing, additional routes that may come, maintenance, and additional staff that are going to potentially be needed due to COVID. So this is sort of our COVID-19, for lack of a better term, sanitizing, cleaning, and all-in needs that the school district may have. We also put back in the Skyview Reach program for $86,000 in the pupil services budget. And then, as I said before, there was a changes in the subsidies of federal funding, which impacted staff development and the title programs based on the different title programs that had changes associated with them. The all-in changes for the salaries and the operational expenses, including debt and everything else, was also $200,441.57, which balances our budget. If you look at the top here, let me slide up here. Sorry, it's our millage increase is now at 2.3947%. Going to the next slide, we still have some options as we stand. We stand with a total revenue and expenditures of $112,422,795.83. We have two different items that are up for vote tonight, which is the salary and benefits associated with the staffing changes at Arcola with regards to FCS and physical education. We also have the transportation, which will be voted on next month, or next week, with regards to the combined bell times of Skyview and Arcola, which should save us about seven to eight routes. If both items were approved, this would lower our budget to $111,820,754.86 and a millage increase of 1.4531. Putting that in perspective, our current budget is $111,863,608.65. So Arden proposed, but if both things were accepted, it would actually be lower by $42,853.79. I did put other options to get us to different changes, to give you an idea to get to a 2%. We'd have to reduce the budget by about $185,566,000. Obviously, we can get there with these two items below. A 1% reduction would require us to go down $947,000. A half percent would go to $1.3 million, and then obviously, a flat tax would be $1.7 million. Again, I'll point you to over here, this is the comparison from this year's current budget to where it would place our budget next year. So we'd actually have a reduction in total taxes and operating budgets. Is there any questions on this information? I will stop sharing then and turn it back over to you, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Seeing there's no questions, I just want to confirm that with the board that Mr. Bricker will be back on next Tuesday, on the 23rd, with the presentation of the final budget, which will be inclusive of any actions that are rendered this evening, as well as will be prepared for presenting what would likely to be two budgets. One with the transportation merger of Arcola and Skyview in the budget and one with out of the budget, so that we can be best prepared to move a budget forward in the timeline before June 30th. So with that said, we'll go on to our next presentation, which is the transportation merger of Arcola and Skyview. So bear with me one second till I bring that presentation up. If members of the board recall, it was at the the May voting meeting where we first presented, we call a preliminary summary of this particular recommendation. So some of the slides actually will look similar to what you have already seen, but there were some things that were finalized in the interim between that preliminary presentation and the one you're going to see this evening. Again, the agenda goes through some of the main items, rationale, the data, the operations, map, staffing, and construction. The rationale really hasn't changed one bit. It reduces buses, it reduces our need for drivers, it saves us, as Mr. Bricker has mentioned, about $370,000 annually. It will also have benefits for students. There will be a decrease in overall ride time for students. It will allow us to have our buses on the campus for dismissal, rather than having them staged off-campus as they are now. It reduces the need for, you know, significant turnaround action, delaying, sometimes delaying and impacting the next route. So this will prevent that. And certainly, as a result of our traffic study, it will provide for enhanced, you know, safety and traffic pattern on campus. Next, this data, it hasn't changed at all from the last presentation, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but it certainly helps us, you know, reduce the number of bus stops that we're going to, which will then reduce the amount of ride time that'll occur. We recognize from our studies, from the traffic studies that were done, about a peak traffic, and we're prepared to offload some of that traffic as our plan will show you shortly. In terms of time, this slide here has been updated and in working with the association, when I say association, the Math Acton Education Association, along with our two building principals, you can see that under student times, and this is an action item for you to approve next week. So you'll be approving two things next week. One is the student start and end times, and secondly, the administration's movement forward with the entire plan. You can see Arcola in 2019 to 2020 had a student start time of 8:05 and a dismissal time of 2:50. Skyview was 8:45 and 3:15. The new times will be, there will be an early drop-off period. So starting at 7:30 in the morning, there will be supervised drop-off for students. By having this available, it will allow parents who decide they want to drop their children off on their way to work have an advantage to dropping the child off and reducing the amount of traffic on our campus in the morning. So it'll spread out the period of time for which parents can drop their child off before the first student bell at 8:15. You will notice that we need to factor in the Ycare timeframe. I will update that before your consideration next week, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that the Ycare is likely going to stay the same. I believe it's either a 6:00 or 6:30 AM start, and that will continue. And the end times will be the same as well. In terms of staff time, staff times have been adjusted. They equal the same amount of time in the contract as it is today. It's just adjusted in terms of the actual hour of start and the hour of end. In terms of bus schedule, here, list out the earliest arrival time. This is more indicative of the things that our buildings and our transportation department coordinate in order to, you know, be able to do the dismissals and arrivals and coordinate that information. Certainly, nothing for you to approve based on this, but these times are targeted times. They may have to be adjusted if, in fact, as we do the routing and as we make other adjustments to have efficiencies, we may need to make adjustments on this, but generally speaking, this is what we're targeting. In terms of operations, this slide hasn't changed, you know, other than its format. We're still talking about staging the buses in the rear. Where currently, the car loop is, we're talking about all clockwise traffic on the campus with no exceptions. Where in the front of the building, along both Arcola and Skyview, it would likely be a parking lane and a through lane, giving enough space for cars who are parked there to pull out, being able to navigate oncoming through traffic. In addition, we will be having, and we'll be showing this to you in the map, we'll be having car lineup also in the, we'll call it the side, the far side parking lot of Skyview. So Skyview car riders can also not only exit out the front, but they can exit out of the side in a supervised manner and in a safe manner, getting to their parents' vehicles. In addition to that, we also know that, as we spoke the last time, that our our car riders will be dismissed right at about the same time we're pulling out with the second wave of our buses in the back, which then allows for us to have the buses exit and proceed off the campus while not holding any traffic up or having cars hold up any traffic for the buses. In order to maybe illustrate this a little bit better, here are the slides. Some of these, or these are actually very similar to the ones that we showed you last week, but this is the aerial view of that campus. We are suggesting with these green markings that the campus traffic be brought in one direction, meaning clockwise. You'll notice on the far bottom left of the screen, there is two-way directional traffic as it is today. The purple areas where staff will park, these are areas where staff parks today. The next item is the bus loading and staging areas. So with this presentation, there'll be staging on the far upper right-hand corner of the screen. There'll actually be staging along this side area along the road here as well, and then obviously, loading in the turnaround areas currently used as the loading area for cars. The next screen shows you the blue car rider loading area, as well as additional car loading area for Skyview students here in the back. We also, as we've reviewed this and reviewed this with the traffic engineer, who has given us the approval to move forward with this, we know that we still have to manage this particular intersection here, and we continue to suggest that we will leverage our evening security services to do that traffic, manage that traffic flow. One of the things that we were able to, you know, determine from the last presentation is the number of staff needed to manage the dismissal and arrival times. So generally speaking, if you just looked at Arcola, these are current, we'll call them extra-duty contracts, that staff receive a payment of $1,000 each. So that's $6,000 annually that is used to have staff monitor and assist students with the arrival and drop-off of both for buses and for car duty. It is estimated that with this change, it will cost the district an additional $7,000. So of the $370,000 that we would save annually, we're likely to, you know, spend $7,000 of that annually to help provide a safe exit and entry into the building for Skyview students. So generally speaking, that's a total of $13,000 annually or $7,000 more than we currently spend on bus duty on that campus. In terms of construction, we know that there's going to be a lot of arrows and painting required in order to make things very apparent for our parents and visitors on the campus. We are working with Mr. Jones in facilities to deal with signers delineating the one-way traffic and other directional signage. And like I mentioned earlier, we did share the entire plan with the engineering firm that conducted our traffic study, and they approved us moving forward. And that pretty much sums up the presentation. Take questions, or Mr. Bricker and I can take questions from members of the board on this. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, in the presentation, Dr. Zerbi, there was a possibility of changing the light functionality, the timing of that light. A, who's in charge of that? Is that a lower province or a state issue? And B, are there any costs associated with that?
In our original presentation, we mentioned about the light. When we shared that with the engineer, they didn't believe that we would need to do that, but said that if there was a need for that, if we found out after implementing this that we felt there was a need, we could contact the township. And it's my understanding that as long as there's no construction and we just need to petition for the change in the timing, there should not be a cost to that. Other questions? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, my one question is just thinking about the car riders, the car loop at dismissal. And I guess at arrival, so is there going to be a sense of when you're coming to pick up your child that there's an area that you're going, if your child is at Skyview versus you're going to a part of the line? If your child is at Arcola, is it going to be separated or just one big line? And also, given that there's one line at one time, is there enough room for all the potential cars that might be coming on a given day? And then my second part of that is, I know at pickup, I've seen kids coming out, students coming out for, to start practice on the fields, and I just want to make sure that we're pinned down with that to make sure that we don't have kids trying to cross in front of this traffic at this one time for any kind of reasons like that, you know, if they're practicing for some of the sports.
Yeah, those are very good questions, Ms. Drummond. What's important is that every aspect of this planning takes into account the safety of the students. So we made sure that when we're talking about bus duty and we're talking about putting people in charge of managing that arrival and dismissal process, that we keep those things in mind. In terms of the number of cars in front of the building, that's why there is a spot along the backside of Skyview where they can also pick up. And I know the diagram actually has an error in it. What I mean by that is, in that side parking lot, there's a blue line in the spots right by the pavement closest to the building, and then there's actually a blue line behind that. That was part of the original diagram, but the blue line behind it will be staff parking, potentially, but car pickup will not occur so that the students don't have to cross into the walkway for, to get to the cars behind, the initial cars to the pavement. So there likely will be some challenges in the dismissal process, more so than the arrival process, because we have the built-in extra time in the morning. And usually, an arrival process is rather quick, where, you know, parents will pull up as close as possible to whichever front entrance their child belongs to, to the given school. And it's a quick exchange, the child, you know, exits, as the vehicle on the right gets out and goes into the school, the parents, you know, go on their way. In the afternoon, it's a different story. You know, parents sometimes come almost an hour early and try to find a spot, and they'll wait for that period of time. I think that's, you know, that's a part of any change, where we're going to have to monitor that. We're going to have to see what has, what new patterns emerge, work with things so that there are some, there may need to be some other staging aspects for some of the cars. We may need to go into separate waves for car dismissal. So there's a lot of things that we can, we have at our disposal that while we put certain things in place initially, we may have to move to as we navigate that particular circumstance. So I hope that helps you with the questions that you had.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, real quick, good. On slide four, you talk about the data, just so I understand that a little bit better. You talk about the number of students and then use the two and a quarter average between Skyview. So is that for the original routing of the number of students that will be on a bus? Do we have a flavor? And then you have numbers here associated with the estimated number of cars coming in and the number of students taking, having their parents or somebody pick them up. So I guess where I'm not getting at is that two and a quarter scares me that we wouldn't model it just off of a two number per bus, but I assume that there's an X percentage that generally rides a car, and that makes that quarter portion where there would be three students on a particular seat on at least a quarter of that bus, if everybody participated and it was a fully loaded bus. Do you understand my question? It's probably better for Tim, actually.
I think I understand your question. I mean, when we do the math on a 72-passenger bus or an 84-passenger bus, and we do it at this, there will be some seats with three students in them. But generally speaking, you know, we've been modeling this, and if I'm correct, we had Arcola at two, and I believe we modeled, you know, prior to this recommendation, Arcola was modeled at two, and Skyview was modeled at two and a half. And therefore, we, you know, it was at the recommendation of transportation to model it kind of in the middle there, assuming that the bodies proportionate to the students would make sense.
So you're modeling it as if everybody participated, but we know for a fact that there's probably at least 10 or 50% on every bus that is being driven, so that more or less the effective capacity is more like 65 or something like that, that eliminates the three in a seat. It just seems like three in a seat even is problematic in high school and elementary. I would think in a five-through-eight circumstance, it would be also problematic.
Yeah, winners, this is the exact formula that we use, we use for the last four or five years.
Okay, so that's just a
It's just combining the two, the two, halfway through.
All right, so I get it, I understand. And then the other question, is the parking lot going to be a two-way? Is there any one-way aspect to the main parking lot?
The parking lot?
Along the front of the school? That is all, within the parking lot?
It has to be one way. That will have to be one way as well. The parking lot, that runs parallel to the front of the building, that parking lot? It has to be one way, because you'll need to exit and continue proceeding clockwise. Other questions? Mr. Neverett?
Do we know how much the improvements you have at the end of this presentation are going to cost? I forget if you put a number on it properly or not.
Yeah, I think from the signage and the painting, we don't think they're going to be, you know, significant enough to, you know, require additional budgeting processes. But I know that Mr. Jones was working on that with Mr. Robert Gallagher to get those figures together. We do not have them at this point. Aside from our normal line painting that we do on an annual basis, I think our conversation was anywhere between, you know, an additional $5,000 or $7,000, the initial, you know, outlay of expense.
Is that something that we can capture in this year's budget before July 1st? In other words, can we expense it this year?
Yeah, that might be possible. You know, depending on, you know, again, the challenge here is, you know, obviously, we're not making any moves until, you know, the board authorizes us to proceed forward. So that'll be next week at the earliest, and then, you know, getting, you know, ordering the materials and getting them on-site prior to July 1 is the activity that we have to get through.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the merger? Ms. Purdue?
I was just curious if we plan, as we have the traffic studies now, do we plan to bring them out? Maybe with the first week when we actually roll this out? Is there a plan to have them come out just to see how it works out or no?
Oh, to have the firm, the engineering firm be on-site for us? Right at the current time, we haven't considered that, but that certainly is something we could do. And I imagine that is probably not the best thing to do in the first week or so. But by week three, if we're having some challenges, that is certainly a reasonable option. There's going to be a little bit of challenge with any change. You know, we've changed traffic patterns on our elementary campuses from time to time. And those, you know, it takes a week or two, the parents get the hang of it, and everybody kind of realizes what they need to do and not do. So I would imagine by week three, if things aren't going well, we can reach out to the engineering firm and get some, you know, additional advice on how to manage that better.
Thank you. And then also, just one more, as far as communication for the school year, when this is approved, going forward, I'm guessing you plan to communicate this out to the parents? And I'm just trying to figure out how, are you presenting anything or just sending out communication for it? And I'm just trying to figure out how, are you presenting anything or just sending out communication for it?
Yeah, I think what's important is, uh, first of all, we want to establish a communication with our, our incoming Skyview and Arcola students so that parents know the start and end times. Okay, so that they can best plan. And secondly, that we want to communicate the early drop-off process. And also we're likely to include the Y care information in there as well. So that, that altogether, they have the information that, that they need in terms of the, uh, the start and end times and, and another of those related matters. It will then also communicate, uh, that, uh, transportation stops and, and routes are being developed and, uh, we'll set up a schedule for communicating those out as we normally do. We, we normally send those out multiple times in, in the summer to give, uh, parents and apprise them of, of what it is that the, uh, the schedule, their, their bus schedule will look like. So I think that, that really is, is generally our plan and, and to do it multiple times throughout the summer. Uh, because, you know, just like, just like you folks, uh, our parents are, are busy, uh, they may not necessarily be at home when that, you know, first email arrives and we want to make sure that, you know, we, we capture, uh, make them aware of the, of this change.
My, my only, oh, sorry, my only comment is I think we should definitely be prepared for carpooling of Skyview Arcola students with other families because they're going to pick up at one, go all the way back around, pick up the Arcola kids. So being able to really have a traffic controller there, knowing that that car might want to do a loop around to pick up the other grouping. I think there'll be a lot of parents saying, oh, my kids at Skyview picked that child up too. So you might see a circling effect occur, so. And then also just after-school sports, let's keep that traffic flow consistent for all things.
Understood, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, um, we'll, uh, move on to the remainder of the agenda.
I guess that's my cue. Um, so for next week, we will have, um, reports will be attached to the agenda. Um, and at this time, I will take public comment on board action items. I know this is a little bit of a, um, unusual situation because it's a work session and we don't usually have voting items. But at the end of our last meeting, we did decide that we were going to be putting a board action item on the agenda tonight, um, regarding the Arcola programming change. So at this time, we'll take public comment on board action items. And it looks like in our list of pre-registered, um, speakers, I do not have anyone signed up for public comment on board action items. Is that correct, Dr. Zerby?
I have to look at the list, I sent it to you, I, I don't, I didn't.
Okay.
I, I mean, if you have the list that I sent you, then that's what, that's what that would say.
Okay. So at this time, um, we'll move on to the suspension of board policy. So can I have a motion to approve the suspension of board policy zero, zero, six point two? With specific regard to the limitation on the number of school directors participating in a meeting electronically, the requirement of having a majority of the board physically present at a meeting location and the holding of votes by roll call.
I saw move, Liz.
Thank you.
I'll second Mary.
Okay. Um, any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Um, so it sounds like it's possible that, um, the ability to register to speak for tonight was limited to courtesy of the floor only. So it looked like we had two people who were interested in commenting on board action items. So I'm going to allow that. I see Mike Ryan, you have your, your hand raised. Um, give me one second so that I can let you, um. Dr. Zerby, do I have the authority to let people into the meeting? Doesn't seem to be working.
I'm gonna do that right now for you.
Okay.
I'm gonna make you a co-host, I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, Mr. Ryan, you're in the meeting, you can unmute.
Thank you very much. And just to throw it out there for the rest of the people, uh, when you signed up to pre-register for this, there was only one box to check to speak during courtesy of the floor. So there may be others who might want to speak during this time for you now too. So hopefully I'll take that for my four minutes.
No, I didn't start my timer yet.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. Um, I've previously spoken about, um, how I thought the process for the Arcola changes, uh, was a bit rushed and a bit flawed. So I won't bring up those points again tonight. Um, I did want to make a few comments about the specific changes being considered. First, in regards to the elimination of FCS, I have to say I'm personally disappointed in the decision. I do think that this elimination is a hit to the idea of the whole child that the faculty has been trying to encourage. Um, I know my daughter who's about to enter Arcola is disappointed because this was something unique from any of the other classes she has taken up until now. I will say that if this change needs to be made for the fear of not being able to hire two new experienced FCS teachers, then maybe this is in fact the right move for the district. Uh, but I hope that this is not just a budgetary decision as there are other items in the proposed budget where money can be saved. Uh, second, in terms of the world language change, uh, from forty-five minutes daily in eighth grade to three times per cycle in both seventh and eighth grade. I have to say that I disagree with some of the rationale given in the attached presentation. Uh, I believe that this change will actually have an adverse effect on the students as opposed to helping them. A current program of five days a week for an entire school year is a true way to immerse the students in a language. Now you will be splitting the same amount of instruction over two years. At a minimum, how much instruction time will be lost when students enter eighth grade? And will need to spend some time reviewing what they have learned in seventh grade just to get them ready to start the new curriculum? This is done in almost every other subject. For the first few weeks of the school year, of instruction are spent on review of prior materials and assessing where the students are. And in general, I ask you to picture this, for any of you trying to learn something new, if you add in the instructor tell you, well, I have two options for you. I can teach you the same amount of material, either all this year, or I could teach you a couple of days a week over the next two years. What option would you take in terms of learning? What option would you, would provide you with a better educational experience? Um, for ELA, first, thank you for attaching the presentation to the agenda. Uh, second, it appears as though there's a lot more data points where it comes to this part of the proposed changes, uh, which I do think is helpful. Um, I do have some questions regarding the numbers on slide eleven for Arcola. Uh, it seems a little off with the overall versus the subgroups. So if board members could kind of check into that to see if that data is accurate. I still have some concerns for the students that this may be an instance of just throwing more time at something and hoping that it has the required effect. What about the current curriculum being used? Is it wholly inadequate? Are there just certain areas that need supplemental time or resources? Are the specific teachers effective in those areas? And have they, and identified as lacking? And all of this is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assisting has resigned. Should implementation of this be put off until a new director is hired with hopefully substantial experience in these matters? I really do hope that all the board members consider these questions before casting their votes this evening. Finally, my last minute or so that I have left, I wanted to address how this was handled at the last board meeting. And the idea that it's a board of ten inclusive of nine board members and the superintendent. It is my sincere hope that Dr. Zerby picked up the phone after the last meeting and personally apologized to each and every board member for his actions during that meeting. He knew he was going to bring up that voting item during old business and didn't tell any of you. He stated that he didn't think he could ask for an item to be brought again before the board after it was tabled or wasn't quite sure how to do that. Did he lose the solicitor's email or his phone number? Did he bring it up at the weekly meeting with the board president? It was intentional and completely unprofessional. As a member of the public now who sat on the other side of that table and heard the superintendent say how we didn't like surprises, he sure surprised all of you at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bickelman? You're in the meeting?
Yeah, this is, uh, Joe Bickelman from Lower Providence. I'd also like to add something to Mike Ryan's comments that, you know, this was, this decision is being done in light of the Director of Curriculum resigning. But you also need to keep in mind that the secondary curriculum supervisor is also gone too. And she can't lend her expertise to that because she left under a separate confidential separation agreement. So you don't have your secondary supervisor with all her expertise as an elementary school principal. And you don't have your Director of, uh, Curriculum, Mary Katona available. So that's a, that's an issue too. So those two people are gone. Maybe you could ask Troy Sisnovic, but, you know, he's gone too, or Bob Harney, he's gone too. Or all the other cabinet members that seem to be gone and administrators that seem to be gone. So why don't you leave this up to our educational leader, Dr. Zerby, who came in August of two thirteen when the high school was ranked eleventh? And he's still here when they're ranked fifty-ninth or sixty-fifth, they went down to sixty-fifth. So why don't you turn to the educational leader that's left and let him make the recommendation? And I'm surprised that all you board members were surprised at Michael Ryan's comments that you were all surprised. So, look around. Did you take a vote on combining the runs yet? At Arcola and Skyviews?
No, no vote has been taken.
Yeah, I saw we're gonna have seven or eight less runs. So that's gonna be seven or eight less drivers. So the drivers are gonna get hit again on that. So, you know, that's tough. And then full-day kindergarten's around the corner, so there goes those runs. So that's tough. And I understand that, uh, the lot manager's leaving, Kim Musser.
Mr. Bickelman, I'm gonna have to ask you to keep your comments to the board action items for this evening.
Well, it has to do with, it has to do with the combination of the transportation, you're losing.
We're not voting on that this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were.
Nope, the only action item is the program change.
All right, so look to your leader that took us from eleventh to sixty-fifth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Okay, so with that, I believe we are done with public comment on board action items. Let me get back to my agenda. So now we all are on to our action item for this evening. May I have a motion to approve and concur in the recommendation of the superintendent to curtail or alter the educational program as described in the attachment pursuant to section one, one, two, four, A two of the Public School Code by eliminating two family consumer science teaching positions and one health that slash physical education teaching position at Arcola Intermediate School effective July first, twenty twenty. Further, the superintendent is directed to notify the Pennsylvania Department of Education of the curtailment or alteration in accordance with section one, one, two, four, B of the Public School Code. Do I have a motion? Mr. Winters? Is there a second? Mr. McGinnis? Comments from the board?
I'll repeat my comments from before, but before I do that, I just have a question about foreign language and staffing. Um, I'm, can, I'm wondering if we're staying with staffing exactly the way it is, which I believe is one French, one Spanish and a part-time German.
I don't believe that there is any staffing changes attached to this. Um, Mr. Regina, could you, I don't know if that's something you could comment on, or Dr. Zerby?
Yeah, there are no staffing, there were no staffing additions, uh, to the recommendation.
Okay, so I'll go with my comments, but I am not going to go for long because I'm repeating everything I've already said. Um, first, I have a child who just graduated Arcola. She had a wonderful experience, thank you to Dr. Mangano and her staff. I have two children about to go to Arcola. I have no doubt they will also have a wonderful experience at Arcola. Um, no matter what happens this evening, I know they will have a wonderful experience at Arcola. Um, as a member of this board for five years, as an educator, um, I'm very disappointed. It's probably the first time, second time, this is the most strong we have ever felt. The other time was when they tried to get, uh, reduce staff by one at Skyview. Um, I firmly believe there should be one FCS teacher and that children should be given the choice if it's impossible to have two of each like we have. So I think that there should be one FCS at least and that children should be given a choice of their, of our, we are in sec, we are in secondary school. As far as PE, I, I understand those tweaks, I'm glad we added some more. We still have more than many other middle schools, so I'm okay with that. I will just add, since this is programming change and you're going to be working on some curriculum, that is part of the health and wellness, we might want to look at some curriculum to do with racial, racial discord, discord since, due, due to the effects of what's going on in our country right now. I know that, uh, it's been discussed, so that might be somewhere where we can put that in. Um, foreign language, um, and I've said it before, it is not in every best, every child's best interest to have foreign language at this time. I know it's a requirement in the high school and for some to, to go on to college, but it is not the best for everyone. I really appreciate Dr. Mangano's effort in having everybody in eighth grade try it the year before. I understand the rationale behind that. But there are children that struggle, um, with certain academics. And now you're throwing in another academic for seventh graders. Um, I do have an issue with the staffing, I just don't see, um, a Spanish teacher for, by, by chance. I mean, my, my child took French, but a Spanish teacher being able to ha, handle that workload. Um, and on to the reading, I am a reading teacher. I am a Pennsylvania Writing and Literature Fellow. Not every child needs eighty minutes of language arts instruction in eighth grade. You need to look at your curriculum. You need to look at your educators', uh, efficiency. The educators are wonderful, but maybe there's some struggling with the new common core. In my district, if you're not meeting certain needs or of the student's needs, or there's a curriculum issue or a teacher issue, the, we have people that work with them. So I just don't think this is for everyone. I think all the ideas are good, but not the way they are. Um, and I think it's everything I've already said at previous meetings.
Mr. Neverett, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I guess Andrea, I think, said it, um, pretty well. Um, I'm really conflicted on this issue. Because I see, you know, the, the presentation that we just had relative to the budget. Um, and this is a big part of getting us down to a number that I think is reasonable. Um, at least that's the impact of it. Um, I struggle with the elimination of FCS. Um, I can, I, I, I think I can stomach it, I don't like it, but I think I can stomach it. Um, I don't like, I don't like the changes to the world language program. I don't think it's fair for us to burden our eighth graders with our failure to deliver them a proper Spanish, French or German class next year. And I don't think what's been put forward meets the standards that we as a school district have set for ourselves. Um. I think there's a lot about this that could be done differently, and I know there are scheduling restrictions. Um, I wish there was a way that we could decouple the changes to the world language programs and ELA from the FCS and PE changes. Because I think I could support one, but I can't support the other. But because they're, they're coupled together, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote no tonight. Um, I, I think we can do better than this. I know, listen, we know that, um, the two FCS teachers were headed for retirement some time ago, right? Whether it was going to be this year, last year, next year. And I recognize the scheduling challenges at Arcola. And I recognize the scheduling challenges at our Cola, but what we've put together here, I don't think meets the standards that we've set for ourselves. So I'm going to vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Neverett. Anyone else have comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I, there was a lot of outreach that we experienced, and I appreciate a lot of the, all the outreach that the citizens and, that we got on input. And even, even interesting, and from that perspective, there was, there was not consensus on the, on the frustration with the proposals. And again, I sort of redundant myself, I guess, Andrea, is that in my five years, I try to make these decisions based on education first. And I, these are various pros and cons and lots of them, but one of the other things I've been advocating for the last five years is making sure we have the proper feedback between schools and, and understanding of the schools. I'm trusting that the administration, when they're telling us that we have this issue that really needs to be resolved around the ELA, to me, that is the highest priority of what we need to fix. So I will be voting yes. Again, I appreciate the input from many, but I believe this is the thing we have to do when we're balancing education and then deciding if we can afford what we want, want to do. Unfortunately, these are the harder, harder times, hard decisions anytime, but also the, I think, the pressure to making these decisions are coming greater on us, and I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Ms. Perdue? Did you have your hand up?
I did, yes. So for me, I guess if I were to summarize the way I feel about this program, and I think I've said it before, I feel like there's parts of this proposal that I can accept, and there's parts of it I feel like could have been worked on better. We've talked about it several times, and I still don't think it's where it is when, for something that I can support. And I feel like the decision to vote for real, implement this change, is really not in the best interest of our students. I think it's more of, of a budget. And I know our budget situation don't look good, but I just can't support it just because I don't feel like it's in the best interest for the students when it comes to world language, when it comes to having that immersion in order to learn that language and just everything else. I think if this looked a little bit different, and I've given input, and I think we've also received input from people within the community and also the staff and administration, I could support it, but as it is now, I can't support it.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I, I'm struggling with the, with, like Ralph was saying, the coupling of these two items, that the FCS and the gym teacher, like eliminating those positions. I can reluctantly get behind that proposal and especially how it impacts the budget. I agree with the feedback that I've heard about the concerns of the course load of the teachers or the student load. I have concerns about a lot of this new proposal and, and also the, the concerns of the, the eighth graders who are really going to be affected by only receiving half a year of the curriculum. And I hope that if we vote yes on this this evening, that we can separately go back and reevaluate through the Education Committee or with the full board or something, review this curriculum change proposal and kind, kind of uncouple it and take it separately then. I just have some, I, I don't, I think I'm a yes on it, but only because I'm, I'm in general agreement with the proposal on the table, what the vote is for. But I, I don't care for this curriculum change. I also agree with Andrea that I don't know that every student needs the increased ELA time that's being proposed, and I have concerns about delivering the language every other day. So it's a lot, it's a lot. But, and I, I appreciate the feedback that we've been given, and I just want the people who have given feedback to know that we are all weighing the feedback and, and trying to work in the best interest of the students and the school.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Did anyone, Ms. Cancro?
So, you know, I just want to, I, I think we're all trying to say that this is not the picture-perfect solution of what's going ahead in the changes for our students, and we do believe in education first and supporting of our teachers and staff. But for each area, we do have to remember that in 2018, we created a focus group that we elected the ELA teachers to combine with our Cola and high school to come together and find what, and what areas of needs were. And this was a target area, they said, for ELA. We take that feedback. And then recently, we received a target plan from the high school where we're identified, where, where Dr. Sergini had identified that ELA was an area that we needed to develop and grow for all students. And we have asked for Dr. Mangano to put together curriculum with the staff to make sure that it is not only to be applied above and beyond. And I do think that we will review 100% how the ELA curriculum will be carried out to make sure that all children meet the needs, do application through speech, all the things that we've already discussed. So I feel like we've already had a target group for that. Two years ago, when we talked about language, we said all students deserve to get exposure to language. It's inclusion. I wholeheartedly believe in that. And allowing them to get exposure to language like they would get exposure to history, to math, to exposure to all things is something that we need to do. And I think it's, all children have the ability to learn, and I think we should absolutely review it. It is our duty to review it at Education Committee Meeting, to review the curriculum, to read, to go through the supports that we're going to provide the teachers. It's going to be a lot of different supports, and we will make sure that we work with the world language to make sure that we address all students when it comes to world language. Phys ed, I just want to reiterate, no numbers were reduced. The schedule does look wonky in a short term, but no numbers were reduced in phys ed, and it will happen all year round. And then we are implementing health and wellness, which is another thing that we have asked to do. Will we, it is our duty to make sure that we, as, as the board, follow through, and I will make sure, Chair of Education Committee Meeting, to follow this through in July and in August, September, with ad hoc meetings if we have to with Dr. Mangano, to make sure that we follow through the plan that we're, if we vote to implement it. But I think we have to look at a higher picture. I do, the segmenting out can't be done right now, unfortunately. We have to look at the whole picture of everything that we look at, the finances, the programming, the needs of the children. It's, it's not a straightforward vote, I understand that, and that's just kind of want to know. I mean, we're, we're all reviewing the same thing, so. My statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cancro. Ms. Hull?
Um, we have talked about this so much, and I think, you know, I don't love this. And it's a, it's a hard choice to accept, but I think foremost, I'm remembering that we're solving for an ELA issue that we have, and that the presentation included tonight demonstrates that on slides eight, nine, and 10, and gives us, you know, what we need to work on and where the deficiencies are. And for foreign language, we've received a lot of feedback. And in some of that feedback, I got reports that showed that there are other local schools that are public and private that introduce a first level of foreign language over two years. Excuse me. So I have concerns about the staffing for the foreign language. I don't know how we would meet that need with what we currently have, but I think overall, I'm on board with accepting this.
Thank you, Ms. Hull. Mr. McGinnis?
I'll be brief because I'll be echoing pretty much a lot, whatever anybody else said, but I do want to say, A, thank you for all the public input. It was very helpful. And B, I will be in favor of this simply through a financial lens. Right now, we have issues which will only be magnified over the next 365 days when we come back next year to do this exercise. So unfortunately, is it perfect? I don't think it is. I don't think anything is perfect right now, but unfortunately, some cuts have to be made, and that's strictly through the financial prism that I'm viewing it. So I will be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. So one of the things that I, I wanted to say is I, I've seen all of the emails that we have gotten over the last month or so or more, sharing concerns and questions about this plan. I know that this is something that has been in discussion in Education Committee, in, in small group meetings with Dr. Mangano and Dr. Zerby. This is not something that just popped up overnight. This is something that Dr. Mangano has been working on for some time before it was ready for public consumption. It has been before this board a couple of different times at least. We've had a lot of conversations about this, and this is a compromise. This is a truly a situation where if I could pick exactly what I wanted, I, I would say let's keep, let's add in LA, ELA, and keep FCS. We don't live in that world. That's not an option. We are solving for the problem of a potential shortcoming in ELA. Some will say that it's because of PSSA scores. I'm not a big believer in those, and I will say that what I'm hearing is that the, the addition of, of language time is not going to be for us to teach to the test. It's going to be for us to be giving our students more of the real-world skills that they're going to need. We're going to be able to tackle things like public speaking and presentation skills. And, you know, for those of us in the corporate world, if you've ever been in a meeting with somebody who doesn't have presentation skills, you know how painful that is. We're getting these kids started with that sort of thing at an earlier age by, by bringing it into the ELA curriculum in eighth grade. And so I would argue that, yeah, we are losing part of the whole child aspect of FCS, but we're gaining another part of the whole child in helping our, our children to be better communicators. I, I think that this is a, a chance for us to make a change that will get us some fiscal efficiency. We're utilizing existing staff who had other responsibilities. We're now reassigning them so that we can make this change without increasing staff, which I think is, is wonderful, that we can add something to our curriculum without increasing our expenses. It's not a financially motivated decision, but it, it's kind of a, an added bonus that this does help us to get some fiscal efficiency. What I will say is that I do see that there are some, some areas for improvement in how we're going to handle this curriculum change. What we're voting on tonight is the staffing change. I, I would like to propose that we are not finished with developing what that is going to look like come September. And I know that Dr. Mangano will be looking at this repeatedly. I know that if there are situations or, or, you know, issues along the way, that maybe it doesn't work as well as we envision it. I know that she will find ways to improve it. We, we have people in our districts who are at the top of their field, and I think that this is a situation where it, it will be addressed. I'd like to find even better ways for us to use this additional ELA time so that we're not just, say, throwing more AR tests at students, because I don't think that's a good use of the time. I don't think that, you know, giving them just more test-taking skills is what we're after here. And with the new curriculum director, I'm confident that we can help keep moving things away from teaching to the test and more towards developing a whole child. And finally, I would say that we can also look to better use of the WIN period. The Warrior WIN period is part of the Our Cola Day, that it stands for "What I Need", and maybe we can bring in things like foreign language clubs or cooking clubs so that some of the, what we're hearing is the fun parts of world language curriculum would have to be cut or skipped over, where they're learning about culture and music and things like that. So maybe we bring in a club. Maybe we give students another opportunity in another part of the day. Students who have an interest in, in cooking, if we don't have an FCS class, we still have the space. So maybe we have a cooking club. I think that there are other ways that we can still solve for those problems and still bring in some aspects of what we might be losing with this. So is it ideal? No. But I, I do think that this is something that, it's an opportunity that we have, and I think that we need to take advantage of it and continue to monitor it and evaluate it and see where we are a year and two years from now and, and continue to do what's best for our students. So with that, we have a motion on the table. I'm going to do a roll call vote. For all those in favor, we'll start with Ms. Reese.
No.
Ms. Hull?
Yes.
Mr. Neverett?
No.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
No.
Ms. Cancro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Drummond?
Yes.
And myself, I'm also voting yes. So with a six to three vote, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. I feel like that this was, was a difficult decision, but I think that we, we put it through the right process.
I'd like to add something just real quick. In the past, some things have never made it on the agenda. I'm going to be pushing for those other things in the past to get on the agenda from now on.
Okay. Um, so Dr. Zerby, I will turn this back over to you at this point.
Yes, please. So next on the agenda is you'll, next week, you'll approve the board meeting minutes, and then we'll go on to fiscal items. Mr. Becker?
Thank you. For this month, we have for your approval of the list of bills, the treasurer's report, the taxes for the 2020, 2021 year, which are the same as the previous year without the other tax that we voted to remove. The depositories for 21, 2020, 2021 fiscal year are the same that we currently have in this year. You also have to approve the school breakfast and lunch prices. These are the same prices that we currently have. There are no increases. That is completed by filling out the PDE pricing tool. There are some changes for à la carte items. Under item F, ice cream prices will increase from $1.25 to a $1.35, 10 cent increase. Cookies will increase from 75 cents to 85 cents, another 10 cent increase. Aquafina splash will increase from $1.75 to $2, 25% increase. Bottled soda will increase from $1.50 to $2. That's a 50 cent increase. Snapple will increase from $1.50 to $2.50 increase. G2 will increase from 150 to 175, a 25 cent increase. Izzy beverages will increase from $1.40 to $1.75, a 35% increase. Wild Ice Tea will increase from $1.40 to $1.50. This is a 10% increase. These increases are to reflect the increased costs that Armar has with regards to obtaining these items. Item number G will be for the Skyview and Our Cola Transportation merger to authorize us to proceed with merging the bus transportation as well as the start and end times for your Cola and Skyview Elementary School. We will have the final budget adoption for 2020, 2021. There'll be two different options. One will be with the merger, and the other one will be without the merger, for the board to select. And I will have the authorization to proceed with the Arrowhead Elementary School, authorized KCBA architects, purchase engineer, and the administrative design team to proceed with the final phase of construction documentation of the new Arrowhead Elementary School as depicted in the attached floor plan rendering. This phase will be completed by October 1st, when the project is scheduled to go out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Are there any questions from the, the board on any of the matters that are presented under fiscal items? Mr. McGinnis?
Hey, Tim, I know Missy Minor and all the other decisions we're making, but I mentioned it in the Finance Committee meeting, and it was echoed by public comment on courtesy of the floor. Do we have any control over the sale of soda in our schools?
I'm sure that the school board could vote to remove anything that they wanted to have out there, but currently, the offerings have been there, and there's never been a cheat, a request to have that removed.
Do, do we have to make that decision in the next week before we approve this, or can that be contractually, is that something we can circle back to?
I do not believe it's contractually obligated to allow them to sell that. We, I can check on that. I do not think that you need to. Before tomorrow, next week, I can get you an answer on that.
Yeah, if you could, just so we can get some sense of urgency if it is contractually and forebound by anything that we vote on next week. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I may just add, Mr. McGinnis, just so you know- Yeah, I may just add, Mr. McGinnis, just so you know, other than items that are covered under the reimbursable meal program, which soda wouldn't be one, we can restrict items. Okay, so I, years ago, I used to run the food programs. I'm familiar with those regulations. So we can get you any specifics, but it's not a contractual matter between us and the vendor. It's a matter of us bringing in any foods that are, that fall within the guidelines by the USDA and restricting any foods that we feel aren't appropriate.
Have we ever gone down that path before, Dr. Zerby?
We have not restricted anything. We have had additions to the lunch menu in terms of à la carte and even items that would be included within the reimbursable plan. So we've added stuff over the years, but I don't recall ever taking anything away.
Yeah, thank you.
And Drew, you kind of was not what I was going to say about the soda, although close to it. What I was going to say and a lot of things, a school district is very, very busy. But a few years ago, we had started a little committee and then nothing happened from it. Not nothing. We had a committee, we had a survey, and then the woman from Aramark was transferred, which was great. But we never, as far as I know, did anything with any of that, and that's what I wanted to bring up. We really need to get back on that. You know, we're bringing this health and wellness to Our Cola and we have not changed any of our food choices. And when you look at the prices, what I know many of us know from our own children's lunch, you know, I put restrictions on my own children, but the ice cream and the cookies, I and the amount of cucumbers a child gets, we all talked about this in the committee, and I really think we need to do a better job with our lunch choices. There was arguments both ways. I'm not saying get rid of ice cream. And parents have to be in charge, and I know there's restrictions people can put on their child's account. To cut to the chase, I would like to look, relook at that again in the next year. And I know I'm not blaming anybody. A district is crazy busy, but this needs to be brought back. I know, I think it was right when Amanda started, and I know Liz was on the committee, several parents, Mrs. Brucker. So maybe, I know Mrs. Brucker as part of her curriculum and the health and wellness, it all has to come together. And we dropped, we did drop the ball. We started it and we never really finished it. So that brings up a good point with the soda. K to eight. I don't think we're selling it K to eight. It must be a high school thing. But I could be wrong. I would hope not.
Yeah, I just, I would like to echo what Andrea says, is saying about the Food Service Committee. We did start something and I think we had a lot of progress. And we did make some inroads there and then there was a change of staff. So with, I think it's Zachary is the new staffer for Aramark, and I would like to see us connect and rejoin this committee. Because I, you know, I think there were concerns echoed by this board. There were concerns, you know, that were brought up from the community about the kinds of food and, you know, and wanting to have healthy options for everybody's just, you know, general good health and wellbeing. So I agree with Andrea. I think we need to take a look at that again.
I'll just, I'll just add to that. I'll second Drew's comment about, I do appreciate that we should get back to the whole thing around this food, but I think on the soda issue, it's kind of a no brainer for us. We should address that quickly. Thank you.
For the record, that large pancake-sized chocolate chip cookie for 25 cents was the only reason I went to school some days back, back in, back in high school. So I don't want that cup.
Any other comments on fiscal items? And I just want to make sure that the board's familiar with, on the item for the proceeding with the Arrowhead Elementary School. If you recall, at last month's meeting, KCB presented, and this is basically the action item that they were referring to at that time that we'd be putting forward here. So it's last month's presentation that's associated with this. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted, I just wanted to add real quick, sorry if I cut anybody off. It's hard on Zoom. But MCC has apparently been working with Zach. I didn't know about that, but I was just informed and that he just got some grant for apparently for some farm fresh food and that he's a firm believer in it. So if we could push him in that direction, and I agree with you, Drew, certainly not getting rid of the cookies. Just allowing children, we talked with, I think it was Jessica, but I, it's not Jessica, the former person about offering some tastings and things like that for kids. And in the backpack program, I love that we give chips, desserts and produce. So I just, I want us to have some more healthy choices.
Any other comments on fiscal items?
Yeah, so Dave, on I here, the authorization to proceed. So I mentioned last week, I think maybe it was Liz also, that want to have more of a discussion around this. And I know that there really wasn't a discussion in the, in the, but there were some items that, you know, I'm looking at the floor plan and I see 86,000 square feet. There's things that we pushed back on that the KCBA stiff-armed us away from, and maybe the rest of the board doesn't want to pursue them. But I do believe that we need to, before we go to some type of final phase where we're sort of locked into a floor plan, there's lots of other decisions that we need to be making around this. And certainly the size of the building is one of them. So, you know, I am hesitant for this as is, but if there's not enough support in the rest of the board to relook at some of these things, then, you know, we're going to move on. But I honestly, I'm looking at the floor plan right now on the first floor, and there's a section that is not labeled. It's a big chunk of space that I have no idea what the heck it is. So that, that gives me a lot of pause when we talk about final phase of construction documentation.
Yeah, Mr. Winters.
The rest of the board feels that way.
Yeah, I think I think there was, you know, a number of comments that we had taken as, as the, I'll call it the Construction Committee. So maybe it was two, possibly three meetings ago, we had asked the board to give us some comments. We took those comments, we shared those with KCBA. They made some adjustments and considered all the, all the questions, some of them in terms of space, one being the cafeteria, where there's a separate cafeteria in this particular construction where there's not one in the other elementary buildings within the district. And certainly, you know, that was, that matter in and of itself certainly was, you know, discussed a number of times. I think also, if I'm not sure, Mr. Navaret, I think we had the building principal discuss the value of that in the Property Committee meeting as well as, you know, the administration recognizes while there isn't a cafeteria in our other elementary schools, having this cafeteria does allow for, you know, greater flexibility and manageability of the potential size for which students will be, which the size of this building is being constructed for to manage the number of students that it, that's designed for. So with that said, I think it's important to know that, at least from a construction perspective, we have built in the alternates, not necessarily an alternate for the removal of the cafeteria, but an alternate to remove other classrooms or other spaces that will allow us to give the board some decision-making power on the day of, you know, reviewing the bids. There's also some other design mechanisms that KCBA is putting into place, meaning alternates for different materials, finishes, et cetera, that will also provide the board with some flexibility on an award day, whether or not they want to accept, you know, certain floor finishes, systems for HVAC, et cetera. But you're also right, Mr. Winters. I think this, you know, it's a big, it's a big step forward. This is, this is probably the step where about 45% of KCBA's work will, and their payment to them are invested in this particular motion here. So, you know, it is a big, is a big step forward because this really sets us up to go right into the Act 34 hearing from the hearing into putting the bids up onto the market and being in a position to make a decision about the contractors in November or December. So in addition to that, at our last meeting, I believe that a comment was put on the floor about any, any concerns or revisiting any concerns regarding the Arrowhead construction project. And I did not receive any from members of the board. And while I did talk with the chairman of the Property Committee and the Finance Committee, we felt it was reasonably appropriate to put that agenda item on the property. We did. We spoke about that. And there was, there was no reason at least that I could tell from that meeting whether or not we needed to make any changes, at least from property. And according to the finance meeting, I also think that those were the, you know, the same, the results of that conversation. So, you know, we can certainly have that conversation now. So if members of the board have other concerns, I certainly can take those back to the design team. But I can tell you that it is the principal's recommendation, my recommendation as well, that the, one of the biggest items that was brought up was a cafeteria. And I think that that does provide us a set of flexibility within the schedule in order to not only leverage having phys ed during the day and recess. And this is one of the key elements that the principal brought up. He can have recess and phys ed in the gym while holding lunch in the middle of the day. And we can do that in the other buildings because our phys ed could take over half of it and the cafeteria is in the other half. So that, that makes us, actually makes us more efficient in the leverage of staff and being able to, you know, maximize, maximize that efficiency. So for the amount of money we would spend, I think, I think, I recall this might be a $500,000 investment. Let's say that's what the cafeteria is. We will gain that over a number of years in efficiency by having that space available to us. So, I mean, that was only one item, and Mr. Winters, that may not necessarily be your whole concern. But I want to make sure that if we want to as a board discuss more of that, we can do that now. I'll take anyone's comments, Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, I'll just add, Paul, I appreciate you bringing this up and continuing to, I guess, beat the drum about it. My personal opinion, I see the efficiencies and see the use. I see how this moves us forward. I do see the potential cost impact of it. I'm not much for being strong-armed by architects. I don't know that's what's happened here, but I also, I don't have any issue pursuing this the way it is going forward. I think what we have is, I think what we have is good. It's right. It's the next best thing to do. I'll also add that in the discussion in property and finance around, you know, there's discussion during our last board meeting about the, not so much the how, but the should we at this point? It was very clear between, at least among property, that there's no reason, we've had those discussions over and over again about the why we need to do this. So from a property perspective, there really isn't much to discuss. And I'll take the words out of Drew's mouth from finance when we talked about this. It was essentially, there is no cheaper time than now to do this project, both from the perspective of the cost of capital and the labor competition that we would expect as we go forward. I think that's probably the most succinct answer to that question that we've had yet. So thanks, Drew. Sorry to steal your thunder there, Paul.
Yeah, so Ralph, what I would say to that is I understand you and Drew's point on those items, but I'm still not convinced on the size of the building related to, I would rather see it more split into pieces that would allow us to make the decision later on about exactly what we need to do. So, I mean, we have five kindergarten classes right now. We do not have a full-day kindergarten program. We don't know necessarily how we're going to fund the full-day kindergarten program. We have five, five classrooms or four, no, five classrooms in the other grades right now. We have learning support, emotional support, occupational therapy, ELL speech, and I understand that we need a lot of those, but do we need all of those? So I prefer to have this, I have no problem proceeding, but it seems like we have this option and a $1 million, take two or three classrooms off type of approach. And I don't think that, and the cafeteria for that matter, but the bottom line is, it seems like we can't scale this back the way that it's being delivered from KCBA.
Mr. McGinnis?
Paul, I hear you, and I think all that can be controlled within your alt packs, right, of how you bid it. So, you know, we can work with KCBA to frame out any type of alternates that we'd like. And that's the way to contain all that and make those decisions. But to hold it up off of that, where it can be controlled on the backend, I don't, I don't, I don't see a need to do that right now.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, Drew, is I don't know for, the alternates are robust enough to provide that flexibility based on what KCBA has proposed. So that was, that's my main pushback is that it is 86,000 square feet, 86,080 on this document. And I'm questioning if we, I know many audience have a different view on this in both directions, but I'm questioning if that's the right size for a new era. So.
How does that size compare to, compared to the current size of our other elementary schools in terms of square feet? Just wondering, if we can get that, that would, that might be helpful.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I mean, we had discussed that at one point, but I can't tell you that with any accuracy.
And then I had a question about the, one of the tax items. Was that, is that the per capita tax that we aren't doing or that we voted to eliminate, that the townships are continuing?
No, that is a service tax. That is not the per capita tax. The per capita tax was removed.
Okay, but is that the same thing where you get like the individual bill?
I'm not sure how they bill it, but it is not the per capita tax that you got, the other one that that was voted out and removed, and we stopped collections on that.
Okay.
Any other comments on the fiscal items? Seeing none, I'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is personnel matters. Mr. Regina?
Good evening. I have a number of matters for the board's consideration this evening. We have three resignation for retirements on the board agenda. We have one classified resignation on the board agenda. One classified employment. Two professional uncompensated leaves. Two sabbatical leaves. Just to recall this, sabbatical leaves are now under one item, whether they are for professional development or for medical, and one is a continuation of a professional sabbatical, and one is medical sabbatical. And three items for supplemental contracts and one, excuse me, one volunteer item.
Are there any questions on HR items?
I just have a question in general, Che. Any positions that we have to advertise for, like the curriculum or anything else? What's the job market like? What I, what I mean by that is, for example, my friend's school in the Poconos just closed for good. So, you know, those staff. that, you know, those staff, but I just don't know what kind of, um, number of applications are you getting for different things?
That, that's a really good question, Andrea. The, what happens is, depending, depending on what positions, uh, people vacate, we have to run through an internal process, so sometimes we don't get to the external market as quickly as we'd like to. Uh, we held a virtual job fair about a month ago, um, so we saw collectively as a county about three hundred applicants. Uh, schools are moving relatively slow right now. Um, there isn't a lot of transition. There's a lot of unknown. So, the, I would say the job market is probably a little greater for the employee at this moment than it has been, um, recently. But that can, that can certainly change on a dime for us. So, um, each of these positions, of course, we're analyzing and, and looking into. Um, we're looking at our enrollment numbers for next year. We're determining whether or not, um, some of this staff, it makes sense for us to refill that position, or if we need to come to the board to say that there are some staffing positions that we may not need to have based on enrollment. So, there's a lot of decisions that we're, that we're looking at right now. Um, we would say elementary still is a pretty decent, um, pretty decent pool of candidates. But we, um, for some of the things that we talked about tonight, some of the positions related to, uh, maybe, uh, like foreign language or, uh, family consumer science are still very difficult to find.
Any other questions on H R? Uh, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, uh, the one above it, the, the supplemental contracts, uh, above the supplemental contracts was the sabbatical, I believe. If you could scroll up. Yeah, the sabbatical leave, so, uh, Mrs. Rodriguez is the full year. Um, I believe she's around step nine and a half or so. Uh, so, eh, what do we do in that situation from a budgeting perspective? And, uh, when we're approving these, uh, from, eh, a evaluation, now obviously this is very late in the process, but I imagine we have approved similar type of sabbaticals in the last few months. So, do we hold the position as the full year in the budget as the, as the individual and the supplemental or sub, uh, full-time sub, uh, comes in as at a different expense? How do we handle something like this?
Sorry, I couldn't get the mute to come off on my screen there. Uh, so what we do is we would budget for disposition, and part of what we have in the substitutes, we typically run about a one-point-seven million dollar cost in substitutes. Uh, we've reduced that to nine-hundred-and-fifty, seventy-five. I can't remember what the exact number is. What we will do is we will hire a long-term sub for that position, I would assume. Discretion of Che, he's shaking his head, which helps me out. Thank you. Uh, and then we would transfer that money, uh, that salary cost into the subs to pay for that long-term sub. Yes, there will be, uh, a portion of savings associated with that. So, it would really come down to what, what other sub cost we have. When we looked at this, uh, previously, we anticipated somewhere between, um, five-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollars of these types of costs occur that we could actually do savings on. And like I just said, we have about eight-hundred thousand built into the budget.
Any other questions from members of the board on matters of H R? If not, I'll move on to the next item, uh, which is cooking and programs. There's nothing on the agenda, uh, for your consideration. Under policy, uh, the policy committee meeting was, we were unable to hold the meeting. Uh, we had to cancel that meeting. I believe that was one of the days when we had a power outage in the community. Uh, so, we, we couldn't even virtually, uh, get there. Um, so we are rescheduling for, I believe, a July date, uh, if I'm correct, Ms. Hall. Uh, I don't know what the date is, but we are, we are looking for a July date for a policy. And, uh, with that on the agenda for next week, your consideration of these five policies as, as listed. Any questions on the policy matters? If not, we'll move on to the next item. Under other, there's gifts and donations. Uh, there's a gift from the Philadelphia Zoo to Arrowhead and Woodland Elementary School for third place in Philly Zoo, uh, unless, uh, contest. Um, they received fifty dollars, which is used towards a challenge program, in the total amount of a hundred dollars. A donation from Giant, uh, uh, Giant Food Company, uh, to support the backpack program in the District of Twenty-Six Eighty-Eight. We really appreciate that. And approve, uh, a gift from Spelled Out, uh, Company, uh, from Lisa and Brian McDonald, uh, for twenty-twenty senior yard sign to be used for graduation ceremony. A gift of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, and then there is an item for P S B A voting delegates. Uh, it's my understanding that Ms. Drummond, Ms. Hall, and Mr. Winters, uh, are on the agenda for next week to be approved by the board as voting delegates, uh, to P S B A, uh, Delegate Assembly, which is held on November seventh of twenty-twenty. Uh, the appointment of the school physician, and these are annual things that, that we do. Uh, physician is still the same. Dennis is still the same. Uh, football team physician is, is still the same. So, uh, we appreciate your approval on those, and that ends, uh, the items, uh, on the agenda for, uh, tonight's work session. I'll turn the meeting back over to, uh, the president.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Um, so we do have our dates for board members' calendars. As a reminder, all of our board meetings and committee meetings for July and August, um, I'm sorry, for, yes, July and August, we had agreed are all going to be virtual. Is that correct, Dr. Zerbi?
Yes, that advertisement will be going out, uh, this week. Uh, with that, and, and in addition to that, we will have, uh, Education Committee meeting on, on July and August, as well as, uh, the rescheduled, uh, meeting for, uh, policy.
Okay, so, um, yeah, you can look for the Zoom dial-in information on the district website. Um, do we have anything for old business? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, sorry to drag us back to personnel items, Che. Um, the, maybe this is a question for Tim as well. Uh, the, the resignations that are here, I know at least one of those was very, very recent. Are those included in the budget figures that we saw tonight?
Uh, no, because the school board has not approved them. I can't remove them.
Okay. All right, so there will be additional savings on the expense side that go in, right? Because I know at least, I know, uh, Missy MacMyers and Miss Begley are.
There'll be a different, there'll be some savings next year, uh, from what we budget, because I can't, you're gonna vote for that after you vote to approve the budget. I can't change that until the budget's, until that's voted for and approved. Same thing with the Arcola Transportation. You're gonna have two different options, because it's gonna depend on how you vote.
Okay, but I would mean, we're in control of what we put in the budget, right? So, it would seem, I don't think we've ever voted against a resignation, and I don't know how we could possibly enforce that, right? So, can we put it in the budget regardless?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be adding that part in. We'll, we'll be adding those parts in. Sorry.
I would second that, but there's no reason that shouldn't be in the, in the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, my old business is a little less serious. I just wanted to sincerely thank, uh, Dr. Sergini and all of his staff that was involved in the graduation. Um, just so much positive feedback, and I was on the fence whether to attend, because I didn't want to be in the way, because it was all, you know, and I'm so glad I did. And I just want a huge shout-out to the graduates for their patience, their parents, and the staff, the teachers that, that came to cheer them on. Um, Dr. Zerbi and his lovely daughter with the Z, who waited hours and hours and very patiently to receive her diploma. Um, it was just a really, really, really nice day and a proud Methacton pride moment. Um, I'm so glad that I went, because I know it's like an honor as a school board director, but I didn't want to be in the way, but it was just such a wonderful, and to see all the parents smiling and their kids smiling that day, and really kind of put together why we all sit here in these meetings and know that no matter what, it works out, and our children receive a great education and a diploma, and they move forward. So, thank you to Dr. Sergini and all his staff that was involved.
Well said, Ms. Reese.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. Um, I don't think I could even count how many emails, text messages, phone calls, um, random people stopping me as I'm running on the street, uh, people telling me how impressed they were with the graduation ceremonies. Um, it was a real win from Methacton. It was, um, it, it was a long day, but it was well worth every minute of it. Um, and everybody who took part in it, whether it was, um, in public or behind the scenes, thank you, because it, it really meant a lot to a lot of people.
I just want to, I don't know if this is old business based on what our vote that we did tonight on the curriculum changes, but I just want to address it as Chair of Education Committee meeting. I will definitely work with Dr. Mangano and the Education Committee to just review the world language. We already have the two meetings to go over the curriculum, making sure the teachers have the technology and the support. Make sure if we need to do ad hoc meetings, that we do those. Um, to work with the world language coordinators, making sure the eighth graders are prepared. Making sure all the learners are, either they have instructional assistance, co-teaching involved in there. I want to also just make sure that we review health and wellness. Uh, allowing us to have professional development for those teachers that are gonna be teaching topics that they're, have not taught before. Like we have said, the mental health, the whole child, the trauma-informed, the social-emotional learning, the executive function, career exploration and transition. Those are topics that I think we have to make sure that they're, they receive. And then, just really making sure, when we address anything, that we can incorporate F C S and merge that into whether it's the win or the health and wellness. So, I just want to make sure you know that we're doing our due, we will make sure we, we are all satisfied as a board, that we follow through with this delivery and the change. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else for old business?
I have a question. Well, first, um, old business, I did want to clarify. I looked on my calendar and I found that our policy meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July seventh, at six-thirty P M. And as a virtual meeting. Um, I did not attend graduation, but I did watch it online, and I was very impressed. And thank you to everyone who put in so much work to make that such a wonderful event. Um, I did want to go back, and I can't recall if we've discussed this or not, but, um, with the resignation of Mrs. Schmitz, is that position going to be refilled, or is that going to be distributed to another area?
We're looking to refill that position. We've already, did we start interviews yet or not? We did. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for old business? How about new business? All right, so then I guess I will open us up for courtesy of the floor. Um, again, the board of directors require members of the public wanting to make comments during courtesy of the floor to pre-register. We have a list of four names, um, and, you know, moving forward, if you do wish to comment, um, during courtesy of the floor, please make sure that you sign up ahead of time. I'm going to my list, and we're gonna start here with Joe Bickelman. Let me find you in the list here, Mr. Bickelman. Okay, Mr. Bickelman, you are in the meeting. Go ahead.
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. You serve soda and sugar-related drinks at the high school, and you talk of the whole child. Pay attention to your food and drink offerings. Check the food service paths of other districts from fifteen to twenty years ago. Do not increase purchase lunch participation and profit margins to the detriment of the student's health. This is a no-brainer situation that has existed for years with current board members. Who is Mr. Jones, Facilities Director? Taxpayers are paying him a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year. In the past, we met a new business manager's family before he was hired and knew where he came from, credentials and everything about him. He lasted a few weeks, and the next guy lasted a couple of weeks. Now we have Mr. Bricker. The Finance Committee minutes, if you read them, there's something in there where I sent an email to the Board President, Kim Aubrey Larsones, on April twenty-seventh. I did not get an acknowledgement of that email. I carbon copied all the board members, and I have no answers on that email. What kind of regime are you running at the district to not give taxpayer answers or acknowledgement? How do board members tonight not have any questions about a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-twelve million dollar budget? All of them don't have answers to that. Dr. Zerbi stated that the board can stop a new Arrowhead project up until the final construction bids are considered and presented to the board. Don't build a fifty-million-dollar Arrowhead school, because Arcola is now underutilized at fifty-seven percent, according to Dr. Zerbi. And Skyview can hold nine-hundred-and-fifty K-to-five students, which would greatly improve students' educational outcomes. In addition, you can save a million dollars in annual operational costs when you close Arrowhead. Plus, you couldn't afford the future new Arrowhead debt payments without extending current debt at a cost of seven-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. That does not include bond closing costs and underwriters discount. You had planned ten million dollars for capital improvement plans to other buildings in this district. It has been curtailed because of a proposed new Arrowhead. These capital plan projects used to be so important. And don't forget, it's humid sometimes at the high school for about two or three weeks. At the end of this year, you'll have a cash surplus of more than eleven million dollars, not counting the one-point-two million of surplus cash that was transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund in eighteen-nineteen. Don't start restricting surpluses for retirement contributions that might increase. You have to pay the piper sooner or later. We never did reserve these things for retirement before, and contributions for retirement went from one percent to thirty-four percent over the last eighteen years. Thanks for supporting Dr. Mangano, Principal and Educational Leader at Arcola, for her proposed curriculum changes. And it's amazing the number of answers that are not on top of Dr. Zerbi's head if those answers would hinder what he wants. And we'll never hear about the square footage comparison of these buildings. And your board members ask questions of things that, like, Mrs. Purdue didn't get her answers about changes in that layout, and Mr. Winters didn't get answers from the architect, and they deserve answers. They deserve the answers to their questions about the layout of tho, of that building. It's for K-to-four students. The gym that is proposed separate from the cafeteria is two-and-a-half times larger than what they have at the Arrowhead now, and that was for a K-to-five building, that it was built at the current Arrowhead. And you have the one proposed for K-to-four that's two-and-a-half times the size.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Next, we have John Andrews. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Andrews.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Reese. Director Responsibility. Great news. Today, Oxford University researches detailed results using a simple steroid on ill COVID-nineteen patients. It reduced deaths by about a third. This result overcame an early and flawed emphasis on treating lung issues. Their better facts were accepted and will lead to fewer lives lost. Years ago, P D E circulated a digit, district budget planning document called Finance One-O-One. It stated you start with a projection of enrollment. Similarly, you need projections to know you have a sufficient number of schools. That's in the school code. Webster, Webster's defines sufficient as enough to meet the needs of a situation. That's your responsibility, rather than satisfying any special interest group. Here in Methacton, you had a political desire to want the Arrowhead school even ahead of all the facts. To further that end, in twenty-eighteen, Malone and McBroom updated high and erroneous base case birth projections. After Dr. Zerbi implied they wouldn't support the need for an Arrowhead school, they responded in a brief memo with bogus claims about the long-term future growth. Then Eminem was a no-show to defend its work at a board meeting. The birth trend continues downward at six per year. Despite public urging for a new enrollment projection, you declined, lest you lose your want. Yesterday, I got the actual birth data of two-seventy-three for last year. A simple and reliable P D E projection model gave that same number in, in an earlier year. M and M had a projection of three hundred and sixteen births for an era of forty-three births. This new birth fact and the PDE model lead to significant reductions of M and M's base plus pipeline K to four enrollments for twenty-three to twenty-four and beyond. This lessens the fictitious need for more classrooms. Years ago, Option C was favored by some directors, maybe in twenty fifteen, on the basis of best utilization of existing buildings and enrollments. I revised the January twenty nineteen claims of Dr. Zerbi against Option C based upon new information. Option C now has desirable utilizations around eighty percent over the future period. Further, high school rankings clearly show its widespread merit and Methacton's rank decline under the current grade structure. I have documented the basis for better Option C education and outcomes. You received my documents. Have you discussed them or said much to defend your want? Option C also has impressive financial savings. Could it be that some on this board think like one of its female members that recently said, I leave the financial stuff to the men? Or that they Skyview Arcola traffic is unfixable, as Ms. Larsones implied, while traffic study recommendations were sitting in the, in the Zerbi in basket? An Arrowhead school has no benefit to students, taxpayers or families considering moving here. Option C is a winner for all. Act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. I just wanted to clarify, because you used my name, and I want to make sure that there is no misunderstanding. I never said anything about the Arcola traffic situation being unfixable. Not sure where that came from. So moving on, we have Dr. Malik.
Can you hear me? You hear me all right? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes.
Thank you. Jim Malik Warsester, I cannot add to anything that Mr. Bickelman and Mr. Andrews said. I've come to the conclusion that the Arrowhead project is not intellectual. It's political, as I've said all along. You just had two individuals make, make the case for what you should do. I can't say anymore about it. I also sent an email to the board about the alleged comment about egging people's homes to the board. I never got an answer either. I asked that there be an investigation that we, and we find out, and apparently nothing's happened. And I kind of agree with Mr. Bickelman on how he feels about it. Is there a reason why we're not, or we're still having these virtual meetings, and you want to continue them through August? Is there some reason that I don't know about that we're having these meetings virtually?
If you'd like an answer, it's gonna cut into your four minutes.
Well, you can, if you want to, if you could answer it at the end, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Because Warsester Township is holding a meeting at the high school tomorrow night. They're having their township meeting at the high school last, tomorrow night. So if Warsester Township can do it, as well as having their right-to-know office, and their office is open the entire time with this COVID thing, I'm not sure I understand why you guys are doing what you're doing. You know, we're in the yellow phase right now. The legislature ended Wolf's emergency order. There's no reason why we can't go back to having normal meetings. So, you know, I would think about it, especially when you're gonna be talking about this big decision with Arrowhead. I think you need to have the next meeting in public. So, is our school right now open? Or is it closed? Are the schools, is the school and offices opened or are they closed? Can you tell me that at the end? I'd appreciate it. The district offices have been closed since, since March the twelfth. And you guys have processed no right-to-know requests. Now, can you tell me how the Black Lives Matter protesters were able to use school property for their protest? You know, if they filed an application for Board Policy Seven Oh Seven, can you tell me that one? You know, who approved the use of school property for a political group's protest? Using property that we've paid for? How about did the board have any input into the Black Lives Matter decision or letting them do their thing on our property? Can you tell me that one? Because I have a problem with a political group that has ties to the DNC using our property for a protest. If you do a little research, you'll find out that the donation arm is something called Act Blue. And all donations are funneled to the DNC, Democrat candidates and the Democrat Party. You guys wouldn't let Wagner do his thing. I don't understand why you're letting these people do their thing. You know, I don't know whether you check out YouTube or not, but there's a YouTube video with Black Lives Matter people advocating killing police. Saying pigs in a blanket, fry them like bacon.
And you guys. I know there's free speech, but I'm very uncomfortable with this, so I'm just gonna be, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm leaving. I'm very uncomfortable with this conversation, and it's very inappropriate for anybody in our community to hear this.
Very, very inappropriate for you to be commenting and to approve a protest with these people. They also have a policy of defunding our police departments, which I disagree with. I don't want my tax money going towards any of that. And if you look at their charter, they're there for destroying the nuclear family. Now, if there's anything more anti-education.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Malik. That's been four minutes. And now Mike Ryan. Okay, Mr. Ryan, you can go ahead.
Thank you very much, Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. I just want to say, one, I am disappointed in the ultimate decision regarding the Arcola program changes. I did want to bring up something that a couple of different board members had mentioned that they thought that some of those items could have been uncalled, that they didn't need to be voted on as a whole. And more than one board member said that. So I'm just curious, when something like that happens, you know, shouldn't that open up a dialogue amongst the board, like, hey, maybe we should consider doing something like that, and what would that look like? Just when a board member has an idea like that, I think that sometimes you might want to just continue the conversation as opposed to already knowing how you're gonna vote in voting that way. But moving forward, I hope that in the Education Committee with Ms. Cancro, that you're marking today as a date and time, and then any year from now, you're going and you're looking to see what impacts you've actually made on ELA, what impacts has it done on the world language program? And two years down the road and three years down the road with the anticipation of, you know, if this was a wrong decision now, to acknowledge it, change it, and go back to the way that it was, and not just be stuck with something, because that was the decision that you made. I would also hope that someone runs this by the new Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment when they're hired to see if they're fully behind this as well. It is an interesting thing that this incoming class that's going into Arcola with these changes being made is the same class that was impacted with the Audubon closure. So I also want to say that I one hundred percent agree with Mr. Bickelman's one statement, that I am amazed that an entire board got their final update on what this budget is gonna look like, and there was no questions. And if you listen to some of the Finance Committee meetings, there's not a whole lot of questions asked there. So we had a lengthy discussion about the traffic flow around a school building, around curriculum changes in one school, but a budget that affects everything, there was no real questions. So, and the decision that saved you two hundred and seventy thousand dollars tonight, and thank you very much, Mr. Neverett, because he pointed out something with one simple question of savings that you're gonna see in next year's budget with those retirements tonight. And this idea, and that we've talked about this in the past, this idea that you have to budget for what you know of the people that you know now, and you can't change it, that that's what you're gonna budget on. Now, you know those retirements are there. What's that gonna save you? Hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe more, depending on who you hire in these positions? So that could have been your savings there. Did you need to do the other ones this evening? And I'd be, I'd be willing to bet that there's gotta be something baked in in the salaries and benefits numbers for any of this to make any sense, because right now, there's not a single increase for MEA for a contract that hasn't been finalized yet. So you're going into this with zero percent. I guarantee that there's money baked into that salary and benefits, and when that contract gets finalized, you're gonna find some money in salaries and benefits, or in the shell game of adding in the substitutes as well. So I just encourage the full board, not just the Finance Committee, but the entire board to become more involved in financial decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. That ends our courtesy of the floor, and I do want to respond to quite a few things that were said this evening. One, Mr. Bickelman, I do acknowledge and apologize that Mr. Bob Jones was not properly introduced. We recognize that in our, I guess, brush to get things ready for a virtual meeting, we did overlook a chance to introduce him to the public. So we will be doing so at a future meeting. So our apologies, our apologies to Mr. Jones, and we look forward to officially introducing you and welcoming you to the district. From what I hear, he's doing a great job so far and has really fit right into Methacton and has hit the ground running. There's questions about virtual meetings. Right now, we're continuing with virtual meetings for a number of reasons. One, under the governor's orders for yellow, we're limited to gatherings of twenty-five people. If you look at who's sitting on the panel right now, we've got fifteen. We can't limit the number of people that attend our meetings, and if we were, I mean, we'd have to say no more than ten people could come into the LGI. And even with that, for us to maintain a safe distance of six feet between board members would be, the logistics of that would be challenging. We have seen a significant increase in public attendance and participation in board meetings since we've gone virtual. And I frankly see no need for us to put any of our staff or board members or public at an increased risk for a board meeting when we have been able to conduct business in a virtual meeting. As things change, as our understanding of what precautions need to be taken change, then maybe we will make a change in how we're conducting our meetings, but for right now, I think this is the appropriate way for us to keep everyone safe and healthy. As to whether or not school is open, the last student day was on the twelfth. School is now closed. The Black Lives Matter protest. I'm not even sure where to start with that one, but I will start with saying, one, a group requested a permit and the permit was approved pursuant to Policy Seven Oh Seven. One of the authorities for us granting that permit is for the social, civic and recreational meetings and entertainment and other uses pertaining to the welfare of the community. I can't think of another, a better reason for us to be using our school property. One of the things that's prohibited is the distribution of political partisan political material. That was not the purpose of this group. This was a student group organizing a peaceful protest. It's something that I'm proud of our students for organizing. From what I have heard, it was a wonderful event. I had other obligations that prevented me from attending personally, but it's something I would have attended had I been able. It's something I stand behind. The allegations that were made by Dr. Malik about the Black Lives Matter organization are false and inflammatory, and I think that comparing this to the use of the Wagner campaign a couple of years ago, when it was someone who was actively campaigning for a political office, and this group, it's not the same thing, not even close. I think that's everything that I needed to respond to, but I'm sure other board members may have something they'd like to say as well. Going once?
You said it best, Kim. I think we'll leave it at that.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, everyone, for hanging in there until the end, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Neverett, and a second, Mr. Winters. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You have a good night.